...which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Well, I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's council meeting, especially welcome to you guys. I know you're giving a presentation shortly, so we're really glad you're here this evening. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. The listing under the consent agenda is a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of routine matters by city council. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and if either a member of the public or a council member would like, we will then remove that item at that time prior to council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of June 13, 2017, approval of the expenditure vouchers of June 27, 2017, approval of a renewal tavern liquor license for Angels End Zone, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license and outdoor dining license, agreement with Blondies, approval of a modification of premises for the Earbow alternative. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody on council that would like to remove any of these items from consent agenda? Okay, if I may have a motion then.
Honorable mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition of $116,167.96.
Second.
Archibek?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Aye. Well, tonight, we are really privileged to welcome the Southwest Conservation Corps, members of the AmeriCorps program. You are here this evening, I understand, to give us a presentation on projects that you've accomplished since you've been in our area. So, is, are one of you going to serve as a spokesman, or are you all going to?
They're all going to speak then.
Okay. Well, come and introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Teresa. We're here for...
If you want to speak, yeah. We can hear you better if you use the mic.
We can record you.
Okay. Hello, my name's Teresa. I'm a program coordinator for the Southwest Conservation Corps. And just kind of an introduction to the work that we do, the Southwest Conservation Corps is a nonprofit. We are based in Durango, Salida, and then we have a bunch of different offices down in New Mexico with our Ancestral Lands Program. And our mission is to empower individuals to positively impact their lives, their communities, and the environment. So, we do that through hands-on work on public lands. So, we partner often with the Forest Service, the Park Service, Bureau of Land Management, some smaller state and local agencies. Specifically here in Monizuma, we're partnered with the Monizuma School to Farm Project, which is who these folks are working with this week. So, I want to introduce them. But first, you know, we serve a lot of different populations and a lot of different youth and young adults in the Four Corners area. We employ over 450 members every year, and they're all AmeriCorps volunteer members. So, they dedicate their time, their summers, their years to working with us and improving our public lands. So, these are our high school program. So, we serve from 14 to about 30 is our typical age range. Our high school programs works with 14 to 18-year-olds. And luckily, this year, we were able to get AmeriCorps awards for our high school members. So, AmeriCorps is a national nonprofit service organization, and so they provide us with a living stipend as well as an AmeriCorps education award at the end of their term. In the past, that has been just for 18-year-old plus, but we're lucky enough to have some smaller awards for younger students. So, our high school members are all AmeriCorps volunteers dedicating their time and work for service and our lands, which is pretty awesome. So, they're all going to receive an AmeriCorps education award at the end of their service with us, which is just Friday already. They've already been with us for about three and a half weeks. And so, yeah, I want to introduce them and let them tell you about what they've been doing.
Who goes first?
Hi, my name is Tristan Holmes, and I am from Aztec, Mexico.
My name's Rose Hatton. I'm from Durango, Colorado.
Hello, my name is Lakota Tukro Collins, and I am from Ignacio, Colorado.
Hello, my name's Tristan Joe, and I'm from Kirtland.
Hello, my name's Tristan Tabor. I'm from Durango.
My name's Owen Hickerson, and I'm also from Durango.
My name's Letitia Garcia, and I'm from Grand Junction.
My name's Sadie Vance. I'm from Bayfield.
My name's Graham Hornak. I'm one of the crew leaders from York, Pennsylvania.
My name's Kristen Hinky, and I'm another one of the crew leaders. I'm from Southern Illinois.
Okay, so, this is my second year. I did the Farm Corps last year, and we worked at Mesa, and that first program was the pilot program. And I decided to come back just because I liked the experience, learning how to plant in this humid climate, learning how to make beds, or garden beds, sorry, in this hot heat, and how different, and just the experience of learning, just being outdoors and not just sitting at home and doing nothing like a normal teenager. But I just liked the outdoors, which is why I chose this program, because I thought it best fit me. And two, I'm using this towards, while I'm doing it in high school, I had to do a long-term project. And so, one of the long-term projects I chose was to make a garden at the school. And so, this is actually helping me go towards that project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I would just like to thank you all for letting us work with you guys and all the other elementary schools around the area. So, to give you a little insight of what we've done, imagine you're at an elementary school or back at one of your old elementary schools, and imagine a wide variety of an area that just has a playground, and it's nothing but grass as far as the eye can see. When we worked at Menal, that's kind of basically what the area had looked like at the time. And so, what our group did when we went in, we made a lot of changes to the area. If you were to go back now, it looks very beautiful, but what we did was we basically created an outdoor classroom, so when the fall comes around, the kids have an opportunity to learn how to grow their own crops during that time. So, what we did is we went in, we made a total of six raised garden beds. We sifted the soil. The wood we had gotten for the garden beds was all donated to us, so we, that was actually great for us, so we actually had a lot of lumber left over to make a lot of things. We made what we call a gray water system. It's a system where water gets processed, so it's cleaner, and it goes towards the garden beds. And we also focused on, excuse me, we also focused on a, what do you call it, an outdoor sitting area to where it would feel like a classroom, and there was shade. And I would just like to say, before we came here, we also worked on an outdoor amphitheater, so we had a chance to get what it's really like out there, out in the field, and what it feels like. So, I do encourage you all to go to Menal. It's, we really made a really wide change. So, thank you, guys, and I hope we get to work with you guys again next year.
Thank you.
So, some things that we are going to take away from this experience, working with SCC is, you know, becoming friends with people that you've never met before, and really getting that bond with them and working with them every day, and then learning how to use the tools that will help you later on in life, and because you can go and do these cool things that we learned to do with SCC and take that for our future. During the days, we all had our struggles with the heat, and some of us had dehydration, but, you know, we all stuck together, and we got it done, and it turned out to be something really beautiful, and we're going to be lifelong friends after this. Thank you.
So, you may have noticed that none of them are actually from the Monizuma area. They're all from, well, we have a wide variety, but none of them from the Monizuma County. So, two points on that. We have a second session that we'll be running, which is our Conservation Crew. So, this is our Farm Corps, and the next month, we run a Conservation Crew that Graham and Kristen will both be leading. And that works more with the state parks in the area, so they go to Mankas State Park and Lone Cone and Lone Mesa. And we will have about half of the crew from Monizuma County, just worked out that way, so half of them will be working for the Southwest Conservation Corps the next session. But just some hopes for the future and things that have been going on. Southwest Conservation Corps has been really honored and feel really fortunate to be part of the Monizuma Inspire Coalition that we've been working with really closely, whose mission is to get, I believe, every student outside in a broad sense. So, we're going to be working with them to get kids outside, give them a living stipend, so they're working, they're gaining those skills that Tristan talked about, of teamwork, of communication, and being together and working outside and accomplishing some goals while spending their summer, working, learning some life skills, and being outside. So, we're really honored to be part of that in the future. We've, we're hoping and hope, fingers crossed, for some money from them coming down the pipe in the next year or so to expand this program and really be able to provide more opportunity for more youth in Monizuma County specifically, just to get more, more kids outside, more kids working, and give them those experiences that they wouldn't have otherwise. So, those are kind of our big dreams for the future in growing our program from one crew to potentially three, so potentially tripling in size next year, and really working closely with the Monizuma Inspire Coalition to effectively work with the students here and create really great opportunities for them. So, yeah, we're thankful that you guys let us come and chat with you today. Does anyone have any questions for us?
So, are you finished now? I mean, are, will you be leaving Cortez and going someplace else or going home or?
Yeah, they have three more days here, pretty much. So, they've been working, they did one week in Durango, and this is their third week here in Cortez doing their project work. And then, these eight folks will be graduating our program on Friday, so they're just finishing up, and then we'll get eight new folks in to go to different state parks in the area.
So, you all then will be finished for the summer, and you'll be able to do other things?
So, where do you guys stay when you come over here?
They're actually camping at Mankas State Park currently, so...
And who goes from Bayfield? Right on.
Well, we are really pleased to have you here and to have you working in our community, and I want you to know that the things that you've done while you were here will be enduring things, and that's kind of the neat thing about a project like this, is that you're here for three weeks, but what you leave behind lasts for a long time. And I know for those kids that go to Menal School, I'm sure they will be most appreciative of the things that you've left behind for them, so thank you so much. Our city clerk got us, brought me some Cortez pens, and I would love to give each one of you one of these to take home as a little remembrance of your time here in Cortez.
They're only a dollar a piece.
That's probably what their stipend is for.
It's funded through GOCO.
Is it?
Yeah.
All of it, 100%?
Um, this program, yeah. I think it's basically the, you apply for a GOCO grant, and if you get it, so the youth for GOCO is basically paying for that.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we can, we can all feel hope that our youth are headed in the right direction. Yes, for sure. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come before council and speak, this is an opportunity for citizen participation. Okay, moving right along. Public hearing, resolution number 12, series 2017, Niva.
All right. I'm here today to present a site plan application from the city of Cortez, represented by Philip Johnson, Director of Public Works. The plan is to, is for a new structure at 110 West Progress Circle, what we all know is the Public Works area. The city plans to construct a new salt shed, 54 by 40 feet, with a 54 by 25-foot concrete pad attached to the east side. The salt shed will be located on the lower east of the lot at the City Service Center. A few weeks ago, you may remember approving a plat amendment for this area. The salt shed will be located within the newly expanded boundaries of Public Works. The city of Cortez land use code requires a site plan for the accessory structure due to the salt shed being over 1,000 square feet in size. The salt shed will be constructed over a poured concrete foundation and will have three bays for various Public Works materials. The salt shed is a pre-engineered building. The city proposes to hire a metal fabrication company to erect this structure. The new structure will replace a potentially unsound Quonset hut-style building that is currently in use. We've done our typical site plan review. The building does meet all of the land use code requirements. The Public Works does plan to put in 3,400 square feet of landscaping, primarily trees along the northern portion of the drive of the expanded 2.51 acres. So, you can see it in the site plan here, if you look on your screen. I'm not sure if you can see the little cursor, but the landscaping is going in along here, here, and here. So, it's also, the landscaping is also going to be a buffer from the lot just to the north and from Road L. So, this was sent out for a review. There were no significant comments for the project. Staff has recommended approval of the site plan.
Okay, I'll open it up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this project for Public Works? Close for public hearing? Counsel, do you have any questions? I heard them say landscaping. That's music to my ears. Yeah. Anybody, anybody else have any questions?
I have none.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve resolution 12, series 2017, with the three conditions, pre-site plan, development plan, for the construction of the salt shed at 110 West Progress Circle, submitted by our agent, Felipe Johnson. Second.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, resolution number 13, series 2017, the Cedar Street subdivision, Niva.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go over this preliminary plat subdivision. Property owner Alan Simonian applied to the city to subdivide a property located at the corner of Cedar Street and Seventh Street. Excuse me while I adjust my screen here. The area proposed for the Cedar Street subdivision amended track B of the Seventh Street minor subdivision is 16,647 square feet in size. The lots will be accessed via South Cedar and West Seventh Street. The property is zoned R2 and is already fully developed with two two-unit duplexes. The proposal will create a two-lot subdivision. Lot B1 is 8,100 square feet in size, and Lot B2 is 8,500 square feet in size. No new development is proposed. This proposal would typically be processed as a minor subdivision because it is less than four lots. However, the parcel was previously part of a minor subdivision, and the process cannot be repeated, therefore, we have reviewed it as a full subdivision. However, because the property is fully developed and already at its max capacity, a lot of what we are looking at for full subdivisions is not applicable. There will be no new streets, there will be no new utilities, there will be no new sewer So, basically, it is in all practicality, just a lot split. The owner has stated that each duplex has its own water tap and sewer connection, so those will not need to be split up. So, I, if you have any questions about this...
So, I wasn't really, I'm not really sure I know what we're doing here, because the buildings are already in existence. They're built. Are they, they're just wanting to divide them off so that they can sell two to somebody else and keep two, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, the only thing we're looking at is just that one lot?
Just, just the one that borders Cedar, right?
Right, so it's the lot that was just highlighted in green, and...
The one with blue around it, correct?
He is just splitting it down the middle, or actually horizontally. So, there'll be one duplex on the north lot and one duplex on the south lot.
Okay, so they're actually, they're actually dividing up those, those two on that section?
Yes.
So, they'll be...
So, each duplex has, has two units in it, and there's...
So, they'll be selling one, they want to sell one duplex unit, and, and, so there's two buildings, but they want to sell one and keep one or sell two or whatever. Yeah, these two. Right. It'll, it'll just include the one building, right? It's not the one that's to the west?
It's just the one.
There's, there's, there's two buildings running north and south of each other, and then there's two more to the west, but it's just the two on the east side closest to Cedar Street?
It is, yes. So, the property we're dealing on is just...
So, it's just?
It's just this property.
We're just dividing this?
Yes.
Okay.
It just must have split it.
Okay, okay, all right, okay. That's okay. I read the thing, and I was clear, so... All right, I will, at this time, open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against dividing this property? Seeing no takers, I close the public hearing. Counsel, does anybody else have any other questions about this?
I was going to say, it looks like all the easements and everything got covered, so honestly, no problem.
I do have one comment, that right now, the subdivision title name is a little lengthy. I'm going to work with the property owner and see if we can shorten it. But it, at this point, it don't, it doesn't matter, because he won't, it, it won't be able to be split anymore.
They won't split it any further than that? Is that what you just said?
Right, yeah. It won't comply with any of the lot size standards.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't behoove this property owner to split it for any other reason than financial, correct?
Yeah, he does claim that the maintenance is a little too much for him to handle at this moment in time.
And Niva looks at me on the, on one of the maps, that, that parking is conceptualized to be split in half as well, kind of right down the center. Is that right?
That parking area will be split down the center, and I did speak to Tracy Hughes, the city planner, about the necessity of having a parking, or some sort of maintenance agreement for that, and she said there's not going to be one needed for that. One half of the parking lot can crumble away, and the other half can be fully maintained by the property owners.
Okay, I can just imagine the mayor and I getting called to a property dispute in 10 years.
I see a real Hatfield McCoy scenario.
I mean, just for part, I think, what everybody hopes, which are good neighbors, just people that talk to each other and work together, but...
We can always put a plat note on the, on the plat about maintenance. And this is a preliminary plat. I will be coming back next month with the final plat. So, there can be changes made.
Okay. So, you'll, you'll clarify that, just to be sure that it's, okay. All right, if there are no other questions from council, yeah, I have...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 13, series 2017, with two conditions, approving the application for preliminary plat of the Cedar Street subdivision amended track B of the Seventh Street minor subdivision, as submitted by owner Alan Simonian. Second.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Thanks. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, Waterline Improvements Project bid for 2017. Phil?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Happy to bring to you the bid results for our 2017 Waterline Improvements Project. This is, we spoke about this, this is the fifth project in a series of projects to get the transmission line from Main Street to the water plant completed. This is a 3,100 linear foot section of it that goes from Balsam to Tucker to Center and to Alamo Street, and there'll be a, a portion of it will include a fiber installation in the Balsam Street portion of this project. The existing water main and services will be preserved for the duration of the project, and temporary water services will be provided if necessary. We received five bids. I'm happy to report, it seems we're getting a few more interested parties in our projects from DNL Construction, Old Castle, Southwest Route, KR Swerfberger, TR Construction, and Williams Construction. The prices, the bid, total bid prices range from 594,000 to 930,000. Our engineer's estimate was 750,000, and we had budgeted $710,000 in this year's budget to get this project done. The low bidder was DNL Construction in the amount of 594,319 dollars, and, you know, staff recommends that we award the contract to DNL Construction in that amount, or the council can approve the bid with changes, you can vote not to approve the bid, or we can table this for further discussion or review. Are there any questions?
Yep. Phil, if I could, I just have one question. I know DNL is doing our paving project right now. Is this going to be, so what's the timing on this? Do they have enough crews to do both, or?
That, we, yes, we've been assured that, yes, that can happen. They're now currently wrapping up the RRFB installation in Mankas, and the Streech project, they're actually doing prep, one block at a time, so they're, they have a smaller crew demoing the road and then bringing it up with class six, so they can do a one-time paving of North Henry where they began, and then also on South Market, building of Cactus Street, and then Beach Street. And we've been assured that they can meet the target deadlines, and they have on the other projects they've bid on.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? May I have a motion, please?
Honorable mayor, I make a motion to approve bid from DNL Construction, the amount of 594,319 dollars for the 2017...
five hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars for the 2017 Waterline Improvement Project.
My second. Carlson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Musaro.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Eva. Twenty seventeen firewall RFP results. Rick?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the, uh, 2017 network budget provides seventy thousand dollars for the purchase of a next-generation firewall appliance and software. Uh, this is needed to protect the city network. Currently, the, um, ASA firewalls that we have do not have the capacity to meet the city's security needs. Um, the firewall, as you may know, sits at the core of the city network. In January of this year, the city was presented with the security assessment that was done by Astonish. Uh, most of the failed items on the security assessment were directly related to the old ASA firewall system. Um, additionally, this, recently, the city had a PCI, uh, credit card compliance test and also failed many of these items because of the firewall. Um, we've been doing quite a bit of research on fire, next-generation firewalls and, um, to give you an idea, some of the enhancements that we're looking at are intrusion protection sys, prevention system, intrusion detection system, content filtering, website control, anti-mallware prevention and as well this new generation, you're able to quarantine, um, infected computers and we also needed to match our upstream internet capacity. Um, also, the firewall will replace, um, the city's iPrism, which is a content filter, which is required because of children at the library. So they need to filter that.
Right, well, and, and it's a filter that we also have on employee computers, so it's, it's a, just a content one that, that makes sure that obscene material doesn't come in anywhere, but specifically the library where we, you know, have tons of people that use our computers, so, but it's, it's a city-wide...
So they can't access any of that at the public computers?
That, that's right.
Could they before?
Well, no, we've had the iPrism for a long time. He's just saying this is...
Okay.
So we're able to eliminate that piece because the firewall will do the same job but better. Um, anyway, responses, we sent out RFPs and we got responses back on June twenty-first. We received two proposals and in the RFP, we requested, uh, uh, three pricing options. Uh, one was a one-year purchase outright, a three-year lease purchase and a five-year lease purchase. Um, and as you'll note, the one-year purchase, uh, low bidder was Sentinel Technologies, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, seventy cents. Venture Technologies, technologies, excuse me, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six. For the three-year lease purchase option, now that includes, um, the software and the annual licensing to cover the term of the lease, uh, as well as smart net support, uh, the low bidder was Venture Technologies, eighty-two thousand, two eighteen, thirty-seven. Um, and a five-year, same thing, but just five years, was seventy thousand, two forty-six, twelve. Um, I would note that Venture Technologies has installed all of the city core network. They put in the, the router, the, the main, uh, switch and, um, the, our old firewall, matter of fact. Uh, we have no experience with Sentinel Technologies. Um, just so council's aware, if we were to purchase it outright, there would still be a year, two, three, four and five, approximately forty-eight thousand dollars of annual software and, uh, smart net support that would be ongoing, which is reflected in the three-year lease. Um, obviously, the amount of the bid is over the budgeted amount of seventy thousand dollars. Um, we would need to update the revised budget for 2017 and as well carry it through eighteen and nineteen.
So, uh, Rick, I had, I had one question for clarification. So if we do a, a three-year lease, um, on year four and five, will we have that approximately fifty thousand dollars? Okay.
Cisco gets you. It's software licensing and smart net support.
Okay.
I would note too that for council's benefit, this next generation, uh, it belongs to a, what they call telus, which is a worldwide network. So for example, a, a mallware pops up in Britain, for example, the database is automatically updated and pushed to all of these next generation. It's a very proactive system, so it's a worldwide database to try to keep things clean. We all know that, um, firewall is just one part of the whole overall security plan, so, but it's probably one of the major ones.
Right, and I think counsel sees, I mean, you, you, you hear more and more people whose information is getting taken, held hostage, you know, and you gotta, gotta like the ransomware and everything else and I just think, you know, we have a lot of employees' personal information, we've got bank accounts, we've got, um, as expensive as this stuff is, I, I just think it's non-negotiable. I mean, we couldn't, I think responsibly have access to this much information and not put as good of a protection as we could in front of the public's data. So I, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's hard for me to pick up an ICMA magazine without reading an article about cybersecurity. It's, you know, it's CML, the conference I just attended, you know, there was a session on that, so it's a prevalent topic and I think it's, um, just, this is just an insurance policy for us to protect our information.
And it's becoming a matter for insurance policies. It's something they're looking at to see whether you have adequate firewalls, adequate protection.
Right.
Um, they're requiring it to keep premiums low, so this is a real positive step forward for us in a lot of ways.
Would, um, I notice with the five-year lease, it keeps us closer to what we usually budget for this, right around seventy thousand was, was what we budgeted, budgeted for just this year? Would that be reflective next year too? Would it be approximately around seventy thousand?
Seventy thousand this year was budgeted at capital one time.
Uh-huh.
So, um, I think what you're getting at, this is, would increase our O and M budget operations, I mean, it's to cover the lease purchase and the software licensing as well as the smart net support.
So at the end of the three years, then we own it and we don't have to keep paying the forty-eight thousand dollars?
No, no, we do have to pay that.
Oh, we do?
It's a continuation lifetime.
All you own is the appliance itself. You don't own the software license or the annual support.
That's why the three years a little bit more attractive than the five-year, right?
That was my thoughts on that.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have no more, thanks.
All right, may I have a vote, please? Or a motion? And then we'll vote.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to award the 2017 firewall upgrade to Venture Technologies for the three-year lease slash purchase amount of eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents per year for a total term amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eleven cents.
My second.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Musaro.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Shee.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Phil.
All right, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances. We have no other items of business. At this time, I'll open it up to any citizens who would like to participate.
I know it wants folks.
Yep, and seeing none. Um, city attorney has no report.
No, ma'am.
City manager?
Just a couple of quick things, your honor. Uh, one is, I think counsel knows, last week I attended the Call of the Municipal League Conference. It was great, really fantastic. Um, I, I just, well, you know, I plan on, uh, doing a little written report for you as I like to do after these things and, and that'll be in your next, uh, work session packet, so you can look forward to, um, a couple of Fridays from now, really digging in deep on that and, and probably enjoying my experiences. So it, there's some good takeaways, there's some things that I'd like to, to bring to counsel to talk about.
What was the highlight? Give us a highlight.
The highlight of the conference? Um, I, I really liked, uh, uh, session I attended, um, City Centennial talked about engaging employees and, and thinking about it differently. Um, so, uh, back in the eighties and nineties, whenever he was doing speed reading, they did a, a test and they took average readers. So let's say they tested Shane and, and you read a hundred and fifty words per minute, Shane, and after I did the speed reading test, you know, we get up to, I think, two hundred and fifty words a minute, which is, or, you know, two hundred words a minute, something like that. So it's like, okay, good, you're doing better. Um, they took Shauna, who was an advanced reader, and she was reading three hundred words per minute after she did the speed reading. Guess what she was reading at? Twenty-nine hundred words a minute. And, and so the, the whole idea with it is that, you know, we focus on, well, you need to be well-rounded and gee, Shane, you need to work on X, Y and Z, you're not really cut in par and that's not really what you should do with employees. What you should really focus on are the ten things that Shauna's exceptional at and, and really say, okay, you're, you're really organized and you're, you know, you're really detail-oriented and, and whatever natural talent she has and not focus on the things that she really doesn't have a natural inclination for. You know, they, they did an exercise where they said, okay, write your name as neatly as you can and we're gonna time you and see how many times you can write it. And so we did that and, you know, I, I think I got my name down six times and so then they said, okay, let's do that exercise again, be nice and neat and do it with your other hand, you know? And it's just kind of the idea that even if I practiced for twenty years, writing my name with my left hand is never gonna look that good and so that was just a way of really getting in and talking about, that they have this assessment they do where they go in, um, these employees take the, these tests and it really, it, it's a survey or test or whatever it is, but it basically identifies their ten strongest skill sets. I, I think that the ten that are just kind of, depending on the situation, maybe they could kind of rise up to or not and the things that really aren't strong suits at all and then the supervisors really take those and kind of gear work and tasks and just understand if Shauna's awesome at these ten things and she really is not naturally inclined for these other kinds of activities, well, maybe Jill is really strong in this stuff, so we'll, we'll switch this task, we'll have Jill work on this stuff and so it, it's, it's really innovative, it's really cool. Um, so, um, it's, it's just something that I wanna dig in more with counsel about. I mean, there's a cost to do it, but, you know, it's a one-time cost, you do it once for an employee. Um, I, I guess now, well, it's all voluntary, so nobody has to do it. Uh, how they did it in Centennial is, I think, uh, all the leadership team, kind of department heads, direct reports, they all did it, um, just kind of went back and preached the word to their employees, like, jeez, this would be nice to have and now they're at a point to where with a new employee, these department directors are saying, please have them do this eval before they even show up to work it. You have them do it during orientation. So, and, um, as a part of that, they've also been doing employee kind of, uh, morale surveys right along with that and has been making adjustments to where they've done things and, and they showed kind of where their morale was when they launched this initiative. As I say, it was fairly average, you know, you had quite a few disengaged people, it, it probably followed the, the normal American chart and since they've done this program, they have a really highly engaged workforce. They have a lot of people who are really, because again, if, if you said, all right, Shauna, today I need you to write with your left hand only and that was her job, you're gonna have a disengaged employee. Guess what she's doing with her other hand, you know, like, whatever. So, I, I, I'm sorry to pick on you, you just have the, the, the high honor of sitting next to me, so I get a pick on you, but, um, so it's really increased employee engagement and morale and, and I think again, if we could get our employees and instead of saying, Linda, let's get you from a hundred and fifty words to three hundred words a minute, say, jeez, let's take you from three hundred words to twenty-nine hundred, you know? And so I, I just like that idea. So anyway, to me, that was one of the cooler sessions and it's something that I'd really like to talk to counsel about and, and bring back, but there, there's a lot and, and you could save me a lot of writing time, I could just keep on talking about the sessions, but, but, but that was...
He said just the high point.
Yeah.
Just the high point.
All right, I'll stop talking, we're, we're, we're running ahead. Um, so, so a, a couple other things, I just wanted to remind you that I, um, next week we, um, are gonna launch our new work hours, so seven-thirty to five-thirty. Um, so we're, we're ready to get going on that and then on Tuesday is the Fourth of July, that's a city holiday. Um, I sent everybody an email earlier today. We have our annual kind of pre-walkthrough meeting this Thursday at three P.M. We're gonna meet at Park DeVita, um, that's Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works Park, um, excuse me, special events. We're just there and, and I look at it almost like the NASA kind of no-go, no-go. You know, everybody talks about their elements, we just make sure everybody knows where everybody's gonna be, you know, everybody feels safe, you know, 'cause again, you know, we wanna have fun on the Fourth of July, but we don't wanna burn the city down, you know, we wanna be, we don't want anybody to get run over. I mean, I was just like...
Somebody might think that was fun.
Well, but, you know, we have a lot of traffic and a lot of people and I just think it's good to get everybody in a meeting and we just all talk about our parts and make sure that, that everybody's on the same page. So, um, it, it's one of those deals with that many people coming to town, I don't think that we can overthink it. So, um, anybody from counsel, you're always welcome to come to that and walk along and see how the sausage is made. So, uh, three o'clock, uh, we meet, um, right by the rec center, we kind of walk on that path just, um, south of the rec center and we kind of go out to where we launch and just stand on side and talk about things. So that's everything.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, on May nineteenth, our Park and Rec, uh, meeting, we had it, uh, Friday, uh, we talked about five different things. First thing we talked about was the, uh, Trails Two Thousand and how they came in and, and we talked a little bit about how we could manage, uh, gar, uh, gear in the Carpenter area and, uh, you know, that we have gone from seventy-six acres to a hundred and eighty acres and this presents a lot of new opportunities for public, but it also presents a lot of challenges as well. Uh, we talked about the use of trails and development of trails and biking and hiking and basically how to care for the, uh, the land out there. And, uh, second, we, we also, uh, had a little discussion on, uh, on, uh, on the previous Wednesday, a couple of the members of the, uh, Park and Rec went to a Monizuma Inspire Coalition get-together at Wild Edge, which was kind of a lot of fun. I mean, they had a lot of good food out there and a lot of good stuff to drink and, and it was, it was good and we, we had a chance to listen to basically, uh, the coalition grant proposal and how all the various groups, there's eighteen groups that are involved in this coalition and how they would be involved if they got the money. And, uh, it was, you know, I, it was enlightening to me because I, I didn't know exactly how the, all that would work out, but, uh, the, the grant, the first draft is due at the end of June, is my understanding, the, the first draft on grant. The final proposal is due at the end of July and it looks like the Monizuma Inspire Coalition is applying for one point five to three million dollars for these eighteen entities. And, uh, it looks, it looks like this funding would be used over a three-year period, uh, two thousand, eighteen, nineteen and twenty. All these entities would use that money and, uh, Dean shared that the likelihood of, of getting the funding, he thought was about fifty-fifty, so, that's what he said.
That's a great oddsmaker.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we're gonna get it or we won't. I'll give you even money.
Uh, anyway, that's just what he said. Not a very good, not a very good... Anyway, we, with the next, uh, we also talked about the beautification incentive project and sixteen businesses have signed up. The city has six to five hundred dollars available for these projects, uh, five hundred dollar max match limit and, uh, uh, we also talked about the, the fact that a lot of these businesses would have probably have never beautified their area if, uh, if they hadn't had this opportunity to use this money. Uh, we also talked about bicycle racks. Uh, there's four new bicycle racks gonna be put in, uh, one at the Wild Edge, one at Cliff Rose Market.
Is that safe?
One at FB Organics and the other one at the Mean Moon Moose and More Ice Cream Bar.
When are the...
Right, right off those calories.
When will they be disbought?
Uh, yeah, it's a good question. I really don't know. I don't know when they're, I guess in the future.
Yeah, I believe, I believe they've been ordered, your honor, and these are, you know, really, uh, we had a citizen come maybe a year ago and, and talked about, jeez, it'd be nice if we had more bike racks downtown and, um, so staff has gone through, we've identified some places that we thought naturally they would go and then we just kind of treated it as if businesses say, hey, I've got a need, we feel like our customers would use this, we're just kind of... need, we feel like our customers would use this, we're just kind of being, I guess, kind of agnostic for preference, and just saying, okay, if you want one, let's just kind of find something that'll work, and then we'll put it out there. So, we're trying to use a, a uniform design and...
Is it like the one right front?
It, it is not, that's a lot, but, these are more, it's like a hitching post, you know, it's, it's one that'll, it's more of a post that I think you could maybe put two bikes at. So, they're smaller, they're a little bit easier to install, and, and they fit a little bit better with narrow ones. So, again, I would say this, like, everything else, just call it a pilot, we're trying these out, see, seeing how they work. They're, they're usually...
We're gonna have someone stand there with a counter and see how often they're used?
Yeah, well, actually, I'm gonna just sit indoors at the Wild Edge and count, so, there you go.
How accurate will that be?
Yeah. Well, okay, I'll, I'll go back forth between Ice Cream and Wild Edge, so...
Yeah.
And the, the last, last, I had a round of discussion, we talked about the possibility of a new, new bicycle rack in front of the rec center. It looks like we're getting more and more riders bringing their bikes to the rec center, and that log out there, I think there's four or five bikes, and we have bikes laying around everywhere out there that we need more lockup space here.
Right. And I would tell you, that's in my observation, I was at the outdoor pool about a week, maybe two weeks ago, and I, I just rode my bike down there to meet the family, and I almost didn't have a place, so I had to do actually outside of the bike rack to lock it up, because it was full. So, it's, it's nice to see.
It's pretty cool that we got people out there riding bikes.
That's absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, although, there's a lot of BMX bikes in mine, you know, I was the only adult on a bike, the rest of, actually, people who couldn't...
Well, you know, that, that log in front of the rec center, I mean, it, it's really not designed for big bikes. It's designed for, you know, the BMX, the small bikes, because if you put a big bike in that log, you're supposed to get messed up. So, and that's pretty expensive for some of those bikes that do that. But it's, it's, you know, I usually just lay mine against the log and lock it up on that limb, it sticks out. But it, it works, but we're, we're looking at possibly getting a new bike rack there, discussion on that.
Would it take the place of the log?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know if we want to keep the log and put another, another bike rack, but I think the, the new bike rack would probably be for big bikes, bigger bikes.
Yeah, and Bob, I almost think we could do, like, we're gonna do downtown, or we could just put up a couple of those posts, you know, they don't take up a lot of space, but give people, you know, a few more choices, and there, they're not limited at all for the bike size, it's just the post to the frame, so it's not a big deal.
That's my meaning.
Okay. Does McKenna match?
You know, I didn't go to the last meeting, but they did, but I wasn't there.
Do you, do you have any idea whether they're, have they found, have they had applicants for their ED position?
I didn't see it in the email.
Okay, okay.
Golf Advisory Board met early, so I missed it. I had a family vacation, and they met a week early, so I don't know.
Right. I, I can, I, I wasn't there, but I did read the minutes, or actually, I think I read the newspaper. I did read the newspaper as well, but...
I don't think we've gotten the minutes yet.
Yeah, so, I, John Brooks presented, I, I think you remember, Councilman Kill and Sam Jarvis talked about kind of the, the player's guide or whatever, the golf guide, and so they picture the different holes. And so, I turned that over to John Brooks, and he did some research, and it turns out, you can actually get these things printed up, the company will do it for free for us. They go out and they sell ads, and basically sell ads to local companies, and print up three thousand of them that we can hand out and use to promote the course. So, that, I think that was a big takeaway from Golf Advisory, is just that it's a cool idea, it's something that would be a nice amenity that we could have for the course, it'd be nice promotional material, and the best thing is, is it's free, and it's done, it's really well done, I mean, it's a high-quality deal. So, I, I think that was the biggest thing. And then also, the Women's Association, I like the man, said, recommended to council that we consider doing a superintendent for golf courses.
The Women's Association also recommended that?
They did.
There you go. Golf Advisory Board.
Let me go back and ask, and ask one question. I know John had talked about taking some before and after pictures of, of the beautification. Where's that gonna be posted? Is that gonna be on the city's website? Is it gonna be the Facebook site? Is it...
Probably, I'd say yes.
Yes to...
Yeah, well, we could do, we could do all of the above.
So, the beautification...
Yeah, where the, where the city gave the, made a match.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, initially, you know, we talked about, you know, it'd be nice to come back for council presentations, you showed everybody kind of the before and after, and where the money went. But, but as far as putting that on the city's website, putting on our web, our Facebook or web, website, I think we do all the above.
Well, I thought we were going to, I just didn't know when it was gonna be on. If, if, if it's, I mean, I don't check it every day, so maybe, maybe it is on, but I just don't know.
Yeah, I could talk to Dean about it, I, I think we were, you know, I guess initially talked about just bringing back kind of like, these are all the projects we did, versus doing them kind of as they come on, but I, I don't know why we wouldn't, you know, so I could talk to him about that.
Okay. I just think it would be nice for people in the community to see us, yeah, not just us.
Sure.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Historical Society?
It's actually supposed to be the first one saved for the month, but they're not having it in July.
Oh, okay.
So, no.
Okay. Shauna Mason, Pretty Country, we're good on, okay. The work session, we had a really nice presentation by Jeff Pope on Parklet's proposal by KSJD. They'd like to, they'd like to extend the sidewalk area enclosing three parking lots there on the corner of Market, Market Street in, in North Main. And so, the city's considering maybe making this a pilot program to see how it works. Jeff's gonna get back with us, and let us know what his board says. We did have a facilitator come for the city's advance, and we received her report, and so Shane spent a good deal of time at the workshop session tonight, just going over the, the goals and the things that, that were proposed, to see if we all agree that that's what happened and what we'd like to do. There was a rec center update on the HVAC system, and then we also had a discussion on discounted rates for people who serve on city, city boards and committees. So, it was a really full work session. Does anybody else have anything for the...
Yes, I do.
Yes?
Happy birthday, Linda Snell. And the flag looks very nice.
And your picture's up, too?
I was gonna say, where did that come from?
Oh, the picture's up, too?
I'm glad it's right in front of Orley. I can't sleep right now. Every, that should be Orley's seat from now on, so he has to look at the floor.
Oh, every...
I'm gonna write a letter.
To who? To whom are you writing it to?[1762.01]